All right, we're gonna start again. So it is 6:12. Call to order, the special call meeting of the Keystone Heights Airport Authority. It is November the 18th, 2024. And I'll ask everyone to please stand for prayer and pledge allegiance. Pray. Our heavenly Father, we pause to give you praise and thanks for your blessings to us. We ask that you give us wisdom, give us insight as we do the business of the airport this evening. We continue to lift up those who are still recovering from the hurricane. Or we continue to lift up our first responders and military as well. Bless them, keep us and our families in your care, in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Coon, roll call, please.
Mr. Kirkland.
Present.
Mr. Pryor.
Here.
Mr. Dajjalov.
Here.
Minister Ludwig.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
General Iker.
Here.
All right, let our record show that we do have a quorum for tonight's special call meeting. And on the agenda, we had FAA issue regarding potential non-compliance and the firm. So Mr. Dodgina had provided for us some information on the background of the lease and a history of lease concerns, some issues that he had listed there with the FAA. Mr. Coon, two hours ago, received a response from the FAA about the voluntary corrective action plan that we had proposed to the FAA. You have a copy of that. And I think because it's all part of this whole subject, that we look at this FAA response, I'm gonna let Mr. Coon kind of lead, take the lead on this. The first couple of pages were what had been submitted to the FAA. The last couple of pages are the FAA response to each of those items. Craig, you wanna take the lead and talk to us about, because you've dealt with Orlando ADO and Atlanta office?
Yeah, so just so everyone's clear, the first few pages were my initial submission as a corrective action plan. I had to extract the comments from the PDF, the way they commented on it, so that you could see it on paper tonight. But their response is not, I feel like I've gotten varying responses from them on different issues. And I don't feel like it's been a very clear path as to what they were asking us to do. I know that the RPZ and some of these things are seen as black and white, but some of the verbal comments I got were, you know, flexible was one word that was used. And so I feel like these comments are not really in line with all the meetings we've had, but they're also coming from a regional office versus a local airport district office.
Just in reviewing all of them, it appears to me that the only positive response from the FAA was with respect to the five-year period to step up payments to achieve the fair market value.
Paragraph 3A, yeah.
Yeah, paragraph 3A. So getting back to the other two items, I think it's pretty clear with what they have listed here, that under 1A, I highlighted the very last portion of the last sentence, that a corrective action plan that aims to bring the area back into full compliance would be required. That is the issue with the runway object-free area, taxiway object-free area, TSA and RPZ. That's the issue with the racetrack traversing the existing ROFA and...
Runway protection zone.
Yeah.
TOFA and TSA and RPZ. So if you'll see on down, it says, "Further, allowing the racetrack to remain in the runway protection zone does not accomplish the RPZ's function of enhancing the protection of people and property on the ground as outlined by the airport design AC. And the existing airport environment does not necessitate the racetrack alignment to traverse the RPZ, and therefore, a CAP that aims to bring the area back into compliance would be required."
That's probably the clearest response we've gotten so far.
Right.
So do we know what exactly that means in terms of what has to be done?
I think what, just, and again, I'm gonna rely on Craig because he's had more discussion, but I think what they're telling us is that any portion of that track that intrudes into that ROFA, TOFA, RPZ, won't be acceptable.
Right.
I agree with that.
So then what would have to be done in terms of, do we know exactly how far out they would have to move it?
It's gotta be on the other side of the line.
It's gotta be outside of those areas. Correct, Mr. Prine?
That's correct. Yeah, and I think the general may be asking for a dimension.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a feel for, does that mean that the whole northern part of the track can't be used? Does that mean they have to move it, you know, 50 feet to the west? Or exactly, what are we telling them?
It doesn't have a dimension.
Yeah. So the yellow is the RPZ there, and the red is what we marked out on the track a few weeks ago.
The yellow is the RPZ. Which way is north?
This way.
Okay.
That's runway.
Okay, gotcha.
If anybody wants to look at this, this is an actual picture where they marked it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's like a little triangle.
So where's the track?
The triangle.
Actually.
This is one track.
Yeah, that's the runway object-free area.
Their track would have to move this way, essentially. The northern, the northern leg, east-west leg of that thing has to move south. What is it, maybe 50 feet, 100 feet, something like that?
Yeah, I don't know what the...
50 or 60.
Does that make sense to you guys? Have you seen that?
Well, yes and no. It's just that the triangle, so if a car is coming this way, they're fine until they hit that triangle. And if the car has passed that area, they're fine. So it's just kind of weird that it's like the triangle.
Well, but they're saying it's not just that triangle, they're saying this whole area now.
Oh, is that an update I had?
Yes.
Well, it's, it's...
It's new today.
Oh. Is there a way to mark that?
It's the, it's the triangle, but it's also the north part of the track that with the future extension of runway 1129, then intrudes into that RPZ.
So at the turn up here?
What's the triangle talking about?
The triangle, this runway object-free area is what we marked out. Because I had the impression with my conversations that this was flexible. But they're saying that not only is this in the RPZ, but they're saying that, they even called this out in their comments, that the Exhibit A of the lease shows that your property line ends here. They're even off of your property line, onto airport property.
Right.
And they were saying something about it wasn't approved to be built to begin with or something?
Yeah.
Now, if I, if I may, real quick, just, just a brief explanation about what Craig had sent out that I had assembled, is a while back, being not real familiar with the, with the lease itself, I went through the file in the airport office. And based upon review of all the documents there, is what I had come up with, with that information, starting from the very first lease and through to recent events. So it's all information taken just strictly from the file on that particular lease.
I would like to ask, just for clarification purposes or even educational purposes, there are airports, many airports across this country and probably around the world, and I have some examples of just a few that are just very close by, of our proximity here, that literally have a thorough fair traverses from one side to the other, right through what would be considered the runway safety area, the runway protections on area. And how is that different than what the situation that we have here?
When you say a thorough fair, what are you talking about?
I mean, I can pull up some pictures, you know, if you wanna see.
Well, that, that's one of the things I think that I called out in my corrective action plan, was that there are other airports that have highways, public roads going through their RPZs, but their response seems indicated that they don't care, I guess.
Yeah, runway 13 approach there at St. Augustine, US 1 right here. You see where, even though that's a displaced threshold, it is still, you know...
Displaced threshold is often the difference from physical pavement geometry.
Yeah.
Well, as far as where our threshold would be on runway 11, where the actual touchdown zone would be, would also be further than that point up there as well. Maybe not the distance that this displaced threshold...
You don't have a displaced threshold on runway 11.
Yeah, but they're not landing right there at the beginning of the pavement. That's what I'm talking about.
The published threshold is, they could land right on the white stripe, the threshold bar.
Right, yeah.
I think most pilots don't, but it could happen, and you have to preserve and protect not only the threshold...
That whole approach area.
But the whole RPZ, runway protection zone, and more importantly, the runway obstacle-free area, and the runway safety area. There's a lot of different surfaces at play.
Sure.
Craig, can I go back to one thing that might add some context? You expressed earlier that there was some positivity expressed, and on one issue, the RPZ, the FAA has told us today that positivity kind of erased. And it kind of addresses what Bobby's question is, when they say at the end of paragraph 1A, "Your existing airport environment does not necessitate a racetrack alignment to traverse the RPZ." There are cases at public airports where a public roadway or an airport service road crosses through an RPZ. They are not preferred, but they are sometimes allowed when it's necessary for either airport security and maintenance personnel to move through the RPZ, or where the public road already existed and it was, it serves a public purpose. I think if I could just read in between the lines here, when the FAA says, "In this case, the racetrack that's already built outside of its lease boundaries does not rise to the level of meeting any of those criteria, so therefore, it's not appropriate."
Okay, that's good clarification to make.
Right, yeah.
And, and I think also, just if I could jump ahead, because somebody may ask this later, this is something Craig, we talked about earlier with the FAA staff, you could voluntarily displace your runway 11 threshold to move the RPZ and everything away from this.
Right.
But the FAA would not allow you to degrade the length and utility of your runway to satisfy a lease non-compliance issue.
Non-aeronautical.
Correct. It's, displaced thresholds are done for fixed objects or, you know, airspace reasons, not to resolve a non-compliant lease issue. So that, that's, that's another, it's like a non-starter. Displacing the threshold would solve the geometry of the problem, but it wouldn't be allowed.
Right.
But that's, Craig, that's one thing that changed from the earlier discussion we had.
Right.
And you might remember, when you developed the CAP, we thought, well, we think we heard them say this, let's submit it that way and see what happens. Well, but what happened was they, they, because of the, it's not a public road, it doesn't serve a public purpose, it shouldn't have been built there to begin with, it's outside the lease area. They point that out in one of their other statements. I think those things are going together.
Yeah.
So, and Bobby, I don't know if that answers your question, but you are right, there are examples where sometimes a public roadway or an airport service road is inside the RPZ.
Yeah, I mean, I mean...
Those serve a specific purpose. It's not non-aeronautical, and it's not for, you know, those are for public, for public good, for public purpose. And I will tell you, I'm aware of at least one other in Florida where a public road is in a runway safety area, and that airport also is dealing with a compliance issue. So they're not, they're not selective, they didn't seek you out to say, you're going to get fiery darts, that this is a problem anywhere it exists, and it has to be resolved. In the other case, that airport is purchasing land to resolve the issue, because they need off-site land to solve their, why is there a public roadway in a runway safety area problem? It's not, I wouldn't say it's common, but it certainly does exist, and I, I think the answer they gave here, from my perspective, is consistent with the way they view this issue at other airports.
I noticed in the FAA's response here, they mentioned the letter from Richard Owens, dated August 10th of 1999, in which the draft lease review of the FAA comments prior to execution of lease agreement, which Mr. Owens did not have any concerns about the lease in and of itself, but there was the statement in that response from Mr. Owens that said, "This review does not extend to any proposed construction which requires notice under FARA Part 77," in which they said that they have no record of any notice of any construction as well.
You mean the prior owner that laid the track down?
Right. Right.
Yeah, we have no record where there was any request from European Rally to construct the track.
Nor do they.
Pardon me?
Nor does the FAA.
Yeah, nor does the FAA. And we had asked Chris about that as well, if y'all had any records that might show that. And apparently, y'all don't either. So if you look at 2B, it talks about that the racetrack extends beyond the bounds of the current leasehold, and into the RPZ and other identified safety areas. I think it gets us back to, again, several boards ago, and several FAA even personnel, Mr. Owens. It's something that was looked at, and then the track got built without any approval.
It was an oversight or...
Yeah, so...
Whatever.
It does...
They're all in it together, where you saw the construction, but they maybe didn't know it was out of the lease, or, and then the FAA approved the plan, but maybe they didn't notice it, so like, now it's visible, and, you know, we're new owners, so we didn't build it, and you guys don't have records. Of course, we don't have records, because when we assumed the lease, we saw it was in the, the plan, and everything was approved.
Well, there was never any plan approved, because it was never submitted.
That's... I think that means the airport layout plan.
Airport layout, yeah. So we would, in other words, we wouldn't have known to, and you wouldn't either, right? You said it was an old port, so you wouldn't have known.
Yeah, none of us were here 25 years ago. It does, it does state, there currently, it appears, the airport is not enforcing the terms of the lease agreement by limiting the tenant's development beyond the leasehold boundaries.
That's a concern.
This point should be addressed in the CAP. So I think that's pretty clear, that they're saying that, that's, again, that's not allowed. That, that part of the track is just not gonna be allowed.
Right. And another, another part of their response, I noticed in paragraph 3, they comment that the motorsports parks are not suitable as a highest and best use for the property due to restrictions in the land deed regarding EPA grant assurances.
I think that's questioning the, what the appraiser used to determine the value, was that they're saying you can't say that's the highest and best use because it's not aeronautical. So they're questioning...
No, they're, they're not questioning the appraisal, they're just making a statement that I see.
The appraiser did not review the deed restrictions in covenants with regard to aeronautical use restrictions. The FAA cannot accept the methodology of the highest and best use as designated as a motorsport park instead of a light industrial commercial airport.
Right. It should be, it should be designated light industrial commercial airport. Right, right.
So that, that's what, that says to me, that they're, they're not accepting the, the way it was valued, and that somebody would have to go back and look at it, the restrictions.
Appears they're not accepting that it's being listed as a motorsports park.
No, they're not accepting...
No, they're, they're saying the appraisal, the FAA cannot accept the methodology of the current appraisal, since the highest and best use is designated as a motorsports park instead of a light industrial commercial airport. So I think Craig has already had a conversation with Mr. Albright, Stephen Albright, that did the appraisal, and he's gonna, he's received this as well. And he said he'd try to get back to you tomorrow, or...
Yeah, I'll probably talk to him.
Oh, to review his calculations.
Comments on what they said.
Yeah.
And, and then the last sentence there in item 3, "At this point, the FAA cannot accept the CAP without a correction to the appraisal report addressing these scoping issues."
What scoping issues are you referring to?
The description of parcel in the appraisal.
Is it describing it as a motorsport and not a light commercial?
Yeah, that makes sense.
In simplest terms, they think the valuation is low, therefore inappropriate, because it wasn't categorized or scoped correctly. I think the scoping issue as well might refer collectively to the description that was used in the appraisal and the comps. In addition, I think they don't believe the comps are correct. I'm not, I'm just reading what they say. The comps are apparently agricultural, rural, recreational.
Is that short for comparison?
They were snails, other snails that were locally...
Yeah. So I think, they think there's two significant flaws to the appraisal method, and that's what the scoping issues are, is the scope of the appraisal was inappropriate in two ways. And hence, they don't say this, but I think the bottom line there is, the value is wrong, meaning the value is low.
So as we've read and seen in the response...
Can I ask one question on that?
Yes, sir.
So if they don't like what the appraisal value they submitted, what is the recourse? Do we have to get another appraisal done? Or do they submit their own, you know, recommendation for what, you know, I mean, what is it, what are the next steps for that?
So just to go back, you're, you're required by your assurances to the FAA that you will lease that land for fair market value.
Right.
So you would have to either get your appraiser to revise the appraisal, or seek another or other appraisal that meets the scoping criteria they think is correct. And I think, Craig, I, I'm not an appraiser, and I don't have a lot of experience in reviewing appraisals. Craig, it's possible your appraiser might come back with, you know, appropriate technical reasons why an appraiser would approach it the way they did. And if so, I think you should roll those back to the FAA and say, you know, "In response to comment 3, we obtained this comment from our appraiser, please evaluate." I mean, I don't know that any of these, some of these do appear to be pretty emphatic statements. But Craig, you'll recall, when we first started the corrective action plan, our approach was talk to them, keep talking to them, and move towards a plan, you know, move, move into a plan, sort of like a funnel, and maybe not agree to anything that we didn't have to agree to until they made it emphatic, which I think, I think that's still a good strategy, until maybe we feel like we're at the tip of the funnel, and there's no more lateral movement. And, you know, I think, I'm not here to state that, I'm just saying, with the strategy we were on, it was comment and response, and, you know, hone in on the target in a stepwise fashion. So comments from your appraiser, I think, would be appropriate if, if there are any.
And just as a reminder, too, this is an open dialogue that fortunately, we can have with the FAA. It's not like we get to submit one voluntary corrective action plan, and then they come back with a response, as they have here, with some recommendations. So fortunately, we, we can go back with information, and then wait on their response to see what that might be. So we'll wait on, he's already gotten with Mr. Albright, so we'll, we'll get that part of this whole process rolling. I think the other concern for the board for us tonight is...
I don't want to speak, Dave Welch is...
Okay, is that we have to look at some of these other items where, as Mr. Prine just said, they're being pretty emphatic, and then have a discussion about those. Welch, you had a comment?
Sure. In terms of the appraisal of comps, it seems to me that for an apples-to-apples comparison, they would need to be comparing the airport property to property zone, light industrial, whatever, that hasn't been developed yet. They, you know, an existing strip mall can't be compared to raw airport property. If you just understand what I'm saying?
Sure.
That would require a lot of develop, and any appraisal or a buyer is gonna discount the price of what are paid, because I've gotta put a lot of investment in developing that. Is that, is that...
Well, it seemed like his comparison would be like airport properties, would it not?
Are you asking me, Dave?
Yeah.
I, I think in a perfect world, that's true, but a problem, again, I'm not an appraiser, and I don't do a lot in this area, but I listen at other airport meetings. Finding other airport comps is often difficult when you have a unique situation.
Yeah.
So, because as soon as you find something similar to this, it's gonna have some other major flaw, like it's in a coastal community, or it's in a metropolitan airport location, or it's 12 acres, it's gonna have some other flaw or, or variable that kind of makes it like, well, okay, well, that's better, but then it's worse, and those other variables skew. So I, in fact, one thing the appraiser might come back and say is, that it was a challenge at all to find anything closely comparable to this, I did the best I could. And he, the appraiser might well tell you, this is the point where you should go find another appraiser. Possibly. I've heard that. See, this other one is trying to be resolved, so just because it's difficult to, you have a very unique situation. And so you can maybe hone in on three out of six variables, and it becomes a judgment call as to which, which variables matter and which don't. And I'm not here to make that judgment, I'm just saying that is sometimes complicated.
Because my point is that realizing that highest use would require some investment, and some big investment, and on top of that, you've been looking at, you know, sewage and providing, you know, those are the, and that's even bigger, so I...
The standard does say highest and best use, though.
Highest and best use...
And highest and best use is referring to aeronautical activities.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, they made that distinction. Yeah, that's, they made that distinction.
Yes.
So I'm not an appraiser, but I am a licensed real estate broker and have dealt with a lot of these type of situations over the last 30 years. And I want to let you know, what is your name?
I'm Bill.
Hey, Bill.
Yeah.
I echo everything. I mean, Albright did state all of the things that have been stated here, if then, but, and comps were hard to find. And here's the justification for why I use these. So I think that it makes a lot of sense for what Craig is doing. They go back to Albright, share the FAA information so he can go back and scour for more comps. It is a unique situation. You're not going to get a perfect comp. But I will say, in reading Albright's appraisal, he did recognize that it's undeveloped. So he was looking for other undeveloped areas. And also the improvements that the firm does, he recognizes, reading the FAA guidelines, that you can't use improvements that the firm did to get value. So I think he can find light industrial use. It might not, like everybody said, be perfect. But I think if he gets a shot at doing that, Albright can do that and that's cheaper. And I will say in terms of appraisals, I got a list of appraisals that are approved by the FAA and also spoke to the CEO of the Gainesville Airport. And Albright was recommended by, I think it was the minor group out of Miami. So he is your, one of the top three that was hands down recommended for this type of appraisal. So I don't think we're off track. I, I think Dave, what you were saying, kind of just beating it back and forth and having these conversations can, as you were saying, Bill, get that to the tip of the funnel. I think the, the scariest thing from, from our view to look at is that, you know, we didn't, we assumed the least not knowing this big track information and that's a large section of track and asphalt's expensive. So that's the part that I'm kind of looking at and having odds over, like, what is the correction here for that? Because that will dramatically impact the business.
So I'm, I'm going to ask Bill again to chime in on this part of the discussion where we're looking at this area that's within the ROFA TOFA RPZ. From what you've read, what you've seen here from the FAA, what's the bottom line? In your opinion?
Also, in my opinion, and I have not talked to the FAA individually about this. Before I make my statement, I still think, and I've, Craig and I have talked about this a lot, just bouncing ideas from each other, sort of in dialogue fashion, the way you would want to use your engineering consultant. You know, how, how other people handle this? Have you ever heard of this before? So I still think keeping an open dialogue on the issues surrounding 1A, 1B is important. However, I think we might be near the end of this discussion. I think they've indicated by access to the alternative, removing track from any part of the RPZ and getting back inside the lease boundaries is, is maybe the only remedy to that problem.
They seem pretty emphatic about that.
Yeah. Again, again, if I could just, you know, the funnel, the, the picture of the funnel, on that one issue, they pushed us to the bottom of the funnel pretty quickly. Whereas in other conversations Craig and I were having, you know, they were open to hearing other ideas. The first thing we floated, I think, was track monitor.
Right.
And we went out and you guys spent money to try to identify the obstacle free area. That doesn't really matter anymore because when you move outside the RPZ, you've moved outside of all the other boundaries around the runway, which are closer to the runway pavement. So to get the, to get any track pavement and any lease parcel development outside the RPZ sort of by, you know, by default solves all the other ROFA TOFA RSA problems. So I, I, I'd have to think about it, David. It's kind of on the spot. I too just read these just before the meeting started. I would like to sleep on it for a night or two and see if I think of anything. And I'm willing to float things back to the FAA in, you know, in casual, in a casual manner. Just as, as we've already done a few things, we, we try not to wear that out, but, you know, occasionally if you have an idea that's, that's, you want to float it, you could float it in a casual environment and kind of read the language you get back. So, but I'm stumped right now. I don't know another way to solve. They don't believe it's consistent to have any part of the lease development inside the RPZ. And, and I am not a student, by the way, I'll put something else out somewhere else. They say, why have you allowed them to operate outside the meets and bounds description of the lease parcel? I cannot tell you that I have firsthand knowledge that I have not traced the meets and bounds. I, I know what I've heard and been told is that the lease does not include the RPZ. So I think they kind of have taken too whacks at that to say a track, a racetrack is not a consistent use inside an RPZ. And anything of any kind related to this lease parcel should not be outside the lease boundary. I think I've been told the RPZ and the lease boundary are the same line or maybe they're offset by a small dimension. The, the lease boundary may be one or two feet away from the RPZ as a meets and bounds descriptions go. But that would be something to check. I can't verify that, that I've ever done that. We have the property map data, so we, we can do that, but I haven't checked the lease and had a surveyor retrace the meets and bounds as a double check on where the lease should be related to the RPZ. But I think we're out of, we're, we're out or almost out of options on that particular compliance issue.
I just have a clarifying question. When you all are talking to the FAA, did they have the old map showing that that road was an unimproved road, but was already there? And the second part of my clarifying question, just so I can get my head around, like, okay, if this is, has to be, that can't be used, right? It seems like that's what we're trending towards. Does it matter that the asphalt remains? Because obviously the cost to remove the asphalt is an additional cost. Or are they just looking for us to build inside the line? Like, is that something we can clarify from them?
We can certainly ask them. I'm, I'm not sure if Bill's aware of something similar at another airport, but.
The, the use is the problem. The use is the biggest.
Not the surface.
It appears that if there was something preventing from crossing that line would, would be sufficient.
Like a barrier.
Satisfy them. Like a barrier. A barrier.
I would assume would limit use.
Right.
I think you could do one of two things. You could leave old pavement and replace it with a barrier. Or remove the old pavement and convert it to turf, which would make it then not a part of the track. And I don't know which of those is more cost effective. I think either of those is reasonable to float as a remedy in the next correction, corrective action plan, if that, if that's an idea that gets laid. I think Craig can propose that with a graphic showing, you know, the tenant will demolish and/or remove pavement, this pavement, that pavement, reconfigure the track accordingly. I, I think they would listen to that.
Or just put Jersey barriers or something in place?
That's possible. They, they, I think they would listen to a Jersey barrier. I don't think they would listen to like a sawhorse barricade as a suitable barrier. Or they probably wouldn't even think of chain link fence as a suitable barrier. I think they're, I think you're going to want to think about a moving vehicle and in the roadway environment, what stops a moving vehicle, a, a concrete Jersey barrier is what's used in that environment. Maybe a guardrail type of construction would be appropriate. They might accept that.
The old concrete is still there from abandoned runway 16, the threshold.
Yeah.
And I don't know why their asphalt would have to be removed that adjoins that, I think. That's never been removed, so.
It would seem like constructive barrier would, would satisfy the situation.
We, we could certainly propose that, Lorena.
Okay. So I did hear K walls. We do have K walls. I guess the other question would be, you know, in parking garages where they have the metal posts, so you can't drive through?
Ballards.
I don't know the technical term. K walls, I know, you know, the concrete walls, but maybe is, maybe we could float like a couple of things. If, hey, if then, or maybe this, because we do have some K walls, but K walls are also pretty expensive. And yeah, we could space them out, you know, to where cars couldn't drive through, but it seems to me like the metal poles to where a car can't get through. If they hit it, obviously it's going to impact, but not necessarily be as fatal as if somebody goes into a K wall. That's the only reason why we don't have, just from a safety perspective, why we don't have K walls out on the track. Because if somebody does go off, it can be fatal. But I understand, Bill, what you're saying about, hey, it can't be a chain link fence or something they could drive through because now if a plane happened to link, you know, it defeats the purpose. So I get that. So I just thought maybe that would be like a third, maybe consideration. We could ask them or even ask them for recommendations.
Guardrail is another option. Just the type of guardrail, the bent aluminum guardrail that you see on a roadway environment.
We have one on the back.
They might accept something like that. That's, that's fixed. It's physically installed in the ground and anchored to the ground. They might accept that instead of the concrete barrier walls.
It sounds like we might want to confirm the meets, like you said, the meets and bounds of that line of, of the lease.
I would say yes. If, if you think you have a plan to resolve the other compliance issues, then, then yes, I think you should.
Of where that barrier should actually be placed.
Double check lease boundaries compared to the RPZ.
Right, yeah.
And then, yes, I think any of these stepwise suggestions could be made in the corrective action plan.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important to know where those lines are before you install something permanent, especially when they're making such a point of making sure that there's nothing inside that zone. Definitely going to need a pinpoint.
Don't you have a surveyor here right now doing the master plan? And is that part of his thing is to?
No.
Survey the RPZ?
There's, that surveyor is supporting the aerial photography.
Oh, that's nothing to do with the ground markings. Okay.
Yeah. We, we do have a surveyor that will be verifying the boundary, the airport boundary. But they will not be tasked, they're not tasked with looking at any RPZs except where the RPZ might touch the boundary. And this is not a boundary, airport boundary condition. So I don't, I'm, I'm not a surveyor. I don't think it's a big task for somebody who has the lease document, which presumably has meets and bounds descriptions to plot that and verify. Is he shaking his head? I don't think it's a huge task.
Would it be easier though? Because it really doesn't matter where their line is if it goes into the RPZ, RPZ, right? So wouldn't the thing to do be just survey the RPZ? Because that's the.
Well, I think we want to, we want to confirm the actual lease boundary of the lease.
Want to confirm.
Because we don't.
Does not encroach in the RPZ.
Right. I think we.
But knowing where the RPZ.
To be enforcing the lease, we want to do that.
So we know where the, and Terry, you might be talking physically on the ground.
Right. I'm talking physically on the ground. Yeah.
I'm talking in space. We know where the RPZ is because it's fixed dimensions and angles from the runway center line.
Okay.
So I know with absolute certainty where in space the RPZ trapezoid shape is. The question is, given the fixed position of the RPZ trapezoid, where is the lease line? Is the lease line on the RPZ? Is it five feet short, 10 feet short? Is it a five foot encroachment? Any draw?
Well, I mean, I thought it's already been determined. That, that's why I guess that's my question. I thought it's already been determined that it's encroaching.
It may not.
It is, but we want it to be determined.
Construction is encroaching.
The track is physically encroaching, but we don't know where the lease agreement ends.
From what you do if you find out since the lease is five feet in the RPZ is.
Then we'll have to fix it.
Adjust the lease.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My, my question is, and again, this is what I asked when we initially started this months ago, is where, this is all being talked about, like it's all of a sudden this just happened. This has been like this for, for many, many years and there's been, you know, the, the current master plan that we've been operating on has been in place in, what did we say, 2016? You know, there's people here in this airport that have been part of that whole process and it's like this is being talked about, like it's something brand new. How, everybody's aware of, nothing's different now. It's all the same. You know, we have people on this board that are pilots that fly in that approach and have probably landed that approach many, many times. And, and it's like we're addressing this like this is all of a sudden a major new issue. And that's, that's the part where I have a problem with it because, you know, this, this didn't just come out of nowhere. This has been like this for decades. Or at least a decade plus X amount of years.
No, the problem is it was recently discovered that there's an encroachment to the safety areas of the runway. That's the problem.
Recently discovered. Everything's exactly the same. Nothing's changed out there.
That's correct.
That's what I'm saying. That's the part that I'm having a hard time grasping this because we're talking about it like.
Apparently people in the past have made an error. Now it's got to be fixed.
This is probably the worst possible answer to that question. This is the nature of non-compliance issues. No, nobody today, no airport today builds a non-compliant whatever, runway taxiway. The discovery, however, of latent old non-compliant issues is how we get into this situation.
Right. But how did y'all not discover this whenever y'all were working on the previous master plan? And, and we have board members here that were also part of that. I don't, that's what I don't understand. That's what I'm having a hard time. It's not, everybody in here is not new and that's, and that's not new.
Because it wasn't discovered sooner.
Right, right.
Well, in a master plan, we plot leases, but we don't do compliance review of leases. In the previous master plan, I think it was, it was within the purview that the FAA may have, may have, could have, may have. It didn't, they could have said, hey, what's going on here? This looks like this is wrong. Please investigate. It could have been discovered in that master plan. It could have been discovered in 1990 or the 2001 master plan. It wasn't. Some of this is just the ebb and flow of the way a federal agency works. There's, they, I'll just pick a number. They have a thousand things and he given cycle 50 are really important and the others are still on the list. And then two years later, it's a different 50 at the top of the list of importance. And land lease and land use compliance has been rising in attention over the last five or six years. Just they, they're paying more attention to this, just like they're paying more attention these days to pavement condition. This is just another, I don't, again, this is possibly the world's worst answer.
Yeah, because that's the thing. The FAA didn't come here.
Issue migrated to where we are.
Yeah, that's the thing is FAA didn't physically come here and find that. It came from here. And that's what I'm trying to say. And it's, again, this is not, this is not something new. That's.
I think maybe.
The, the end of the lease is what precipitated, and I'm not a student in the lease, the length of the lease, but I believe the end of the lease and the need to renegotiate the lease is what caused current board members.
Right.
And previously current airport managers.
And that's, and that's another subject because it, it, in one way, some people are categorizing as an end of the lease. In another way, it was essentially a 50-year lease and not, and we're saying that the 25 year, and that's, that's the other issue.
Well, it was an end of the lease period.
I'm sorry, yes.
First term.
Student of the lease, I apologize. That's probably bad phrasing, but the, the end of a lease.
Yeah, the mission is 25 years.
Is what caused, to do a deep dive, that's my word.
Now, another thing that I noticed in the FAA's response is they made a comment that the fair market value should be reviewed every three years. Thought that was interesting.
To answer your question, you say there's board members on here and how did we not know? When I go down the taxiway or the runway, there's stripes on either side of it. They're painted delineated lines. The RPZ doesn't have any stripes. It's just grass out there and trees grow into it. But the question, and I kind of agree with you, David Smith comes here every, every year from FDOT. How come he didn't catch it? He's been doing this for years. I land on runway 11 when they're racing their cars over there. They've never threatened me. I feel comfortable coming into land. Sometimes I come in low. They might be scared of me. But there's no physical lines on the ground. And I don't know, quite frankly, if I'm in an airplane and they say, what's your latitude and longitude? I've got to look at my GPS to tell them I'm in an emergency here right now. I don't know where I'm at, but my screen tells me I'm at this latitude and this longitude. That's what you're talking about here is you're talking about latitudes and longitudes. Now, when runway 1634 was there and they noticed the skid track, that was the old runway, that's what I say, the concrete's still out there. But where does their track meet that concrete? It kind of comes in, it kind of brushes into it. I figured whoever did it years ago, and maybe this is naive of me, I thought they knew what they were doing, but then we find out there's no supporting documents that say anybody ever got approval for Ivor to, I think it was Ivor that built this thing. Why wasn't somebody over here on the porch seeing bulletproofers over there? Why wasn't somebody over here on the porch seeing bullet whippers over there and asphalt machines? I don't know any of that because I wasn't on the board then. It's just now we're just finding out. It's like that, the cousin, you don't want to come to Thanksgiving dinner, the skeleton in the closet, so. But I don't think anybody's done this deliberately, you're just finding.
But now it's gotta be fixed.
It's gotta be fixed.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Related to the barriers. Would that, would that prevent the area beyond the barriers from being used for camping or picnicking or running their radio controlled cars? How do you, how could you, could you ensure that that area you vacated isn't, isn't used for some other purpose?
No trespassing signs or something like that. No trespassing, keep out, unauthorized area, airport operations area. You know, you can note it.
I mean, the whole land is like that. There isn't like a wall around our lease. We thought we were functioning within our boundaries and we don't, we would, to my knowledge, at least in seven years that I've been there, we don't let people camp or use it or go out there because we recognize that as airport space. So everything on this side is sacrosanct, like we don't do anything. I mean, we mow a little section along the skid pad, you know, so the grass doesn't get too tall and if a car, a teen driver goes off, they don't hedge fire to the grass, but that's it.
Good deal. Okay, so it's not like some music festival where everybody wanders off?
No. I mean, but Chrissy knows all the boundaries and, you know, there's probably, I don't know, like a hundred, uh, non, you know, municipality, um, my mind went blank, but they, they know.
I got you.
And we're pretty rigid about it.
Their, their instructors drive with people in the cars too. And once they've done that, or I'm sure you have safety briefings before people go out on the track.
For every single track, yeah.
So they would probably brief about that, look, there's an area down here, there's bollards there, you're not to go beyond this.
I was thinking more in the intervals of this, a couple times a year, I guess you have big gatherings where.
Occasionally you get some stray people to get out, but I've never seen any. In fact, somebody broke the ribbon and went down our new road there and they couldn't have seen that happening. It was probably at nighttime. I know you can't be everywhere.
Yeah.
But you just more could best can.
I'm good, thanks.
Bill, were you gonna explain what you were drawing?
I was just gonna, it's very nuanced. So Terry, the, the runway is a fixed position. There's a nail at the end of the white threshold bar and at the other end of the runway, 5,000 feet away, there's another nail. Latitude, longitude, elevation, it's all fixed and that establishes the center line. The RPZ is this trapezoidal shape, I can't quote you the numbers, but these angles are specific by FAA criteria, the offset on each side of the center line, the distance from the end of the runway. So in space, that's a fixed line. I know where that is, it's in our CAD file, it's fixed. What I don't know and what I think is worth double checking is where is the lease line over here where it's adjacent to the RPZ? Is it on it coincident with it? Is it two feet off? Is it mistakenly two feet inside? Is it 10 feet off?
Well, it almost sounds like that we've already determined that it's.
Well.
From everything I'm hearing, I mean, I thought it had already been determined.
I think what we've determined is the part of the racetrack that's built like this.
Yeah.
That's definitely over the RPZ. You can see that on an aerial photo.
Uh huh.
If, if the racetrack was back here inside the lease boundary, and if we could double check while we're here to make sure that lease boundary is no worse than on the RPZ line, I think that's what I was suggesting be double checked. While we're here, with Bobby's question in mind, how did we not discover this earlier? I think we have an opportunity to double check something and that seems like it's not, it's not too complicated, is it? Right, what I'm describing for a surveyor?
It should be, it should be easy.
Yes, it should be easy. There's quirks happen and meets and bounds sometimes have typographical errors or something could happen, but.
And some of, some of the descriptions that I've read from the old firm property are atrocious.
Correct, yes. But, but if you're checking that segment of the lease, I guess the risk, if we're gonna suggest another corrective action to the FAA to say, here, we're, we collectively, the airport and the tenant are willing to do this to correct the problem, I want to be sure we aren't inadvertently embedding another problem that no existed.
Right.
By, by having accepted something that's being old and was inaccurate.
Right.
That's all I'm saying about that.
Thank you for that. I have one clarifying question. Is this kind of like trying to take a Google map and then superimpose it up over the actual land so you can see?
Yes, but a Google map has a lot of error in it. It's not precise, so it's doing it at a level of tenths of an inch.
Well, conceptually, I mean, like you have up here, but we're trying to figure out if we were to create a template and put it here, would it work?
Well, yes, all of that can be translated to the ground physically.
Okay, gotcha.
The picture that's there.
JB Pro. Back in May.
Maybe.
Has the same information on it.
Okay.
That you got from them.
Yeah.
Okay. So we know that that RPZ that's shown right there is superimposed correctly or are we saying it may not be?
The, the RPZ is drawn.
The yellow line there?
Yes.
Yeah.
But it's superimposed on an aerial photograph?
Yeah.
The aerial photograph has embedded within it some horizontal error. I think of it as stretching.
Gotcha. So that line would look different.
It's gonna be within three to five feet probably.
But that JB Pro image was ortho rectified, right?
The second, yes, there was, if you're just, but she asked about a Google aerial. If you're just imposing it over a Google aerial, it's gonna have what, it may be up to 10 feet of air, five to 10 feet of air.
I'm sorry, I gotta sign off on Google. I was just trying to in my brain understand, because you're talking about space, I don't know what the correct term for your file in space. So I was just using it as like a corollary.
It's the computer file.
Okay, so that computer file, so that computer file that you have in space.
Yep.
When it gets kind of templated over the actual area, we don't think that line will change much? Okay.
It visually, it might move one or two feet.
Got it.
But I, I think if you want to know how big the problem is.
Yeah.
You can look at a graphic like that and realize relatively speaking.
I mean, we're not talking inches, that's like a whole wide section of the track.
Probably 60 feet.
Okay, got it.
The question you're asking really now is where's the lease in relation to?
That's exactly what I'm asking. I'm suggesting that be double checked.
And that seemed very appropriate to double check.
Yes.
For consideration to place a new barrier and make sure it's in the right spot.
Put haywalls in the, outside of our lease boundary.
I would suggest is, I, I would put double check the survey on a list of things to do. I wouldn't actually go pay for that until you had a, an actual approved action plan where you thought, okay, this is gonna move forward and we can solve all the other problems. Because you're gonna pay a survey or something to do that. If the whole thing falls apart and we don't, you don't move forward, you've wasted the surveyors.
So what, you're just saying that we need to propose this action first to get it approved and then go out there and.
Corrective action plan. I think, again, I think the FAA, the, the closer we get to talking them into agreeing to things, the more specificity you should provide. That's something else Craig and I have talked about is let's, let's start and we'll move closer with both actions and specificity to what we're proposing to do. And you could say in your corrective action plan, you know, we will have a surveyor verify the lease, we'll stake it on the ground so that, so that, you know, the, and I would, this is just me personally, I'm an engineer, I was born to be conservative and I am conservative. I would never have drawn a lease boundary coincident with the RPZ line. I would have put it 10 feet away. Might think five or two or one feet is enough, but I would have wanted a buffer. I don't think there is a buffer. What I've heard is it's, it's on, the lease line is the same line as the RPZ. If I was correcting this, I would just suggest caution, if you're already out there moving stuff, create a buffer for yourself so that nobody comes back and says, hey, that Jersey barrier, that bollard or that guardrail is one foot over the line and you're back to getting a non-compliance letter.
Yeah, that sounds very reasonable.
It seems to me like a belt and suspenders guy, I don't know, my suspenders, so that's a bad. But don't put it backwards on the line as well as a penalty.
But don't we need to survey anyway? Because we don't know where that line is now. And I, I agree with Frank. I, I actually gave Frank some information from the original lease and trying to look at that because to my knowledge, what's attached to the original lease is a very abbreviated.
Description.
Description. And so it, it kind of gets us back to finding where that little triangle is, you know, on the track. We, we paid JB Brown to come out and survey and establish that.
All they looked at was the roof, just to be clear. They only, you only asked them to come survey the amount of the runway obstacle free area, which on the graphic is the little red triangle.
Correct.
And so we were answering the specific question. They were not given the lease. They were given our CAD file, which has the RPZ and the center line depicted. And they did physically verify the center line, which any good surveyor would check his controls and say, yep, they said this is the center line and my instrument says it is too, I'm good to go. And they, they set the offsets to the runway obstacle free area. Had we had foresight at the time, we might have asked them to also stake or paint or mark the RPZ line. But I think in all honesty, at the time, I think Craig and I thought we'd be able to talk to the FAA and make that problem go away. We were successful in that one regard.
Yeah, because the idea there was to identify how much of that was inside or the track intruded in, into that ROFA. So with the idea, with the volunteer corrective action plan, that the track monitors could be utilized possibly and we would still, with that information, it being so small, perhaps they would be agreeable to it, which now we know they're not.
We, we lacked foresight on that, we're optimistic. Craig said this earlier, Bobby, this is maybe another question, how did we get here? This issue went from a district office issue in Orlando and it got booted to the region and it's just a different, the FAA regional office is a different level of scrutiny. It has more people and more skill sets looking at the issue to come up with questions and comments. And there's another level, so don't do anything to get it escalated to headquarters. I'm just saying.
Bill, do you know the dimensions of the RPZ?
Not off the top of my head, but they are published in an FAA.
Well, I was just wondering because they've got the dimensions, it looks like marked out on this map. It comes from the lease agreement and I was just gonna say, if they match the dimensions of the known RPZ, you know, right then, they put it up to the line.
Probably.
Yeah.
Well, that, that leads me to my question. So if, if we think that their lease agreement is, or their leased line is concurrent with the RPZ line, and I also notice on the north side or the northwest side of runway 10-8 or which is now 11-9, it shows 50 feet northerly of and parallel to. So that means their lease comes within 50 feet of the edge of that runway. Are we talking about, are we proposing that we go and do this entire survey in that whole block? And if we are, are we gonna shift some away from the runway? Because the RPZ, if they did it on this side of the RPZ, they probably did it on that side of the RPZ too.
I would think they did the same thing.
But who did what, built the track?
So the RPZ conflict right now is because of the racetrack.
Yeah.
But if they are concurrent, if this line is concurrent with this line and that happens to be the lease line, it's pretty soon they did the same thing on this side. Over there on that, now they don't have any obstacles over there, it's just free land. I mean, it's grass in it, but should it be corrected there too if we need a five foot or a 10 foot buffer?
And that seems reasonable.
Have that whole thing surveyed and how, how do we look with a 50 foot buffer off the edge of our runway on the north? Will that be the northeast side of that?
It's off the runway? Are they 50?
I'm looking here, it says line 50 feet northerly and, and parallel to runway.
50 feet off.
10-8, which is now 11-9.
Right. Seems pretty close, doesn't it?
It does seem close. I'm actually mowing over on their lease.
Thank you.
When I mow, when I mow over that tree line, I'm wondering if we shouldn't go an additional 25 feet off that or something. I don't think it's gonna affect y'all actuality wise.
What is the runway protection zone off of the side of a runway?
Well, that would be the ROFA or whatever.
Okay, was it?
This side, the ROFA runway obstacle free area. You know what, again, I don't have.
I think it's.
Sorry, I have to look that up and get back to.
I think our taxiways are 45 feet on either side of the taxiway, aren't they? Like it's 45 feet, that's just on the taxiway. And if we're gonna have this whole area surveyed, that will be a substantial amount of money. That won't be like just doing this end down here, I think. But if we're gonna do it, it seems like we ought to look at the runway because that's gonna be the next.
Yeah.
If we're not in compliance there. It seems to me, Bill, you told us on the taxiways here, the TOFAs or whatever, I thought were like 45 feet.
The TOFAs.
From the center line. What's, what's that?
TOFAs are narrower than ROFA's.
So it seems like that runway might be a compliance issue being 50 feet, but that's 50 feet off the edge, not 50 feet from the center line.
Yeah. That should be 100 feet from the center line. And that might be appropriate.
Okay.
So.
But it's worth double checking before that becomes a issue.
I'm just saying, before we go survey something, we better think about the whole picture.
Didn't have anything built along that line, right?
Right.
No, they don't, they don't.
But you're right.
They don't even come over on that, but if you wanted to go by their lease agreement, they could bring Jeeps down the side of the runway there and drive them, you know, or when they had a rally or something. They wouldn't, but they could.
Those are points that can change.
I don't know.
I was waiting for one of them to ask that. I don't really answer that. I don't think so in that timeframe. Sorry. Is that how the description? We're talking about how the lease description is written. It's referencing. So what is it referencing? The runway pavement or?
Pavement of runway 10-28 and on throughout the course of the description. The pavement runway 16-34.
Well, I don't think the pavement has changed and yes, I guess philosophically, you should evaluate whether it's a good idea to write a lease description based on physical pavement that could be, could change over time.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, as opposed to if you were rewriting this, you'd probably use a different method. You would either use monumentation or a runway center line, which, which doesn't typically move.
Right.
A runway end could move, so that's also not a very good, over time, a runway end could move, could be changed.
The other thing on the end of runway 10-8, or well, it would be on, it'd be on the.
We're off track though because now we're discovering other problems that not really fits.
Again, if we do a survey.
Well, I, I think the question though is still, since they have addressed meets and bounds and what about the location within the RPZ, I still think we've got to have a survey of some sort to find out for sure.
I agree.
Yes.
Where, where things are.
I think while we're looking at that, we, we would want to confirm that none of these firm boundaries encroach on any other protection area.
Well, that's why I'm saying, if you want to look at the beginning of runway 29, is it possible that that angular line is not the RPZ for 23?
Mm hmm, right.
I mean, it's on an angle.
Yeah.
A coincidence.
Yeah.
So this, this survey was done when the lease was first executed, I'm assuming back in 1999. Is that what we think or is this?
That's what we think, yeah.
It's been added on because this is.
No, no, that's, that's part of the original lease.
Their, their trail over there.
It looks like it was recorded at the courthouse in 2000.
Okay.
February 7th, 2000.
Are you saying it would be in here?
Yeah. You compared this. Look at your RPZ here, right there, where is it standing here? Okay, maybe it does. Maybe this goes off and it doesn't interfere with that, but how do we know?
Yeah, I hear you.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Maybe it doesn't look to be in conflict down there, but it better check everything.
So. So Jim, question for Jim then, from a legal standpoint, we need to know what the property, the leased property, what those boundaries are.
I think so. Bill and I were just talking about this and he already reckon, already recommended this to the board. I think we try to get to a point where we have a corrective action plan approved. And then when we know it's approved and going forward, let's get that survey done.
And.
Well, it sounds like that should be step one of the corrective action plan.
Well, I, I think the reason I've caveated that is to prevent the board from spending money on something that's, turns out that we have no value. Because it, again, I'm not, I'm not making a suggestion or a recommendation, but if you're unable to solve some of the other non-compliance issues, or if the firm turns around and says, if that's the resolution that the FAA will accept, we're out, you don't need a survey.
Mm hmm.
If, if the lease is not going to be renewed and or amended and or if a new lease is not going to be written with, with certain conditions, you don't really need a survey. You can, this, this release expires.
I agree with you. It would seem that step one with an approved corrective action plan would be to get the survey done.
Mm hmm. And then step two is to identify then the appropriate location of a barrier.
And by today's standards, there's probably a better way to write the lease description from real meets and bounds, section, corner, monumentation, not referencing runway pavements or other.
Right.
Fixed constructed objects that could change over time. Section corner doesn't move, so it should be monumented to section lines and section corners, which again, I'm not a student of the lease description, other than the one thing I've been told that follows the RPZ line. But again, if you're unable to remedy the other compliance issues with the FAA, you know, it's just, it's not useful information to have paid a couple thousand dollars for a survey effort.
Right, right.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, um, I feel, I really appreciate that on both sides of the equation. And don't get mad at me, but on the other side of the equation, we're going to have to take all this information and, you know, we need to know how much this is going to cost because at some point, maybe it does make more sense for us. And we don't want to leave, we have loved the relationship with the airport. We don't want to leave the airport high and dry, but maybe we have to consider an alternate location or closing shop or doing something and giving you guys notice until you can find new tenants. Do you have new tenants or is that something that you would like to explore? Because that kind of helps us gauge at this point. Because we've shared our financials, I think with you all. I know there was maybe some disbelief about them, but they really are what they are. Like the airport, we're on a shoestring budget. And this could be a really big cost. So have you guys thought about that or what, what is your thinking around that? Just so we kind of have more information for when we leave this meeting.
Well, as we've said all along, our first and most important thing is that we have to stay compliant with the FAA and FDOT because we cannot forfeit any grant assurance for the funding that, that we get.
Yeah, we understand.
Maintain the airport.
We get that. And, you know, like I said, it looks like we're trending towards, hey, we're not going to be able to use this. So the next thing for us to look at is, hey, can we afford to do this remediation or does it make more sense for us to, to leave? Do you have anybody that's interested? Do you see a different use for it? That helps us. And, you know, I'm not making any, I'm spitballing, right? Because this is all new information. You guys are trying to look at your financials and order of operations, what makes sense for you. And my brain's kind of, you know, on the same track of, I don't know where the threshold
Well, I think the question, I, I think the issue is, like we were talking about the barriers.
Yeah.
If we, from what the FAA is saying, then if you put barriers there, you can't use track, you can't use track, right? I mean, that's going to.
No, I mean.
That's going to limit that northern end of your track.
I'm looking at it a little bit differently. The way I'm looking at it, based on the information that I've received today, is that part of the track is in non-compliance and ergo, it cannot be used. So the firm has to make a decision. Do we just stop using the track for, because we have different business. You know, we have rally, which doesn't need that section of the track. We, doesn't need that. We have military training. You could probably modify the course and not use that. So now we're talking about just our track business. And it's about a third of our business. So we would have to look at our financials if we just stop doing track altogether. We have to look at our financials and know, hey, can we reconfigure inside these boundaries? How much would it cost to do that? Because it's not just a matter of, oh, you can't use that anymore. Like we have to reconfigure this layout and redo pavement inside the lease boundary. I don't know the cost of that. And I don't know if anybody here does, if you have an idea of asphalt cost or could spitball a number, but to me, it seems like it's going to be a big number.
Yeah.
So those are two options. In order to work with the airport to be in compliance and recognize, hey, regardless of who done it or how we got here, can't happen anymore.
Right.
But that's, sounds like the bill's going to be on us, right? And we didn't do anything wrong either. I mean, we assumed the lease in good faith. We went through legal. We, this was never disclosed. We didn't know. We thought we were behaving and, you know, so we're in the same, you know, we're in this situation, but we're going to flip the bill essentially is what's going to happen. So those are the things we need to look at. And if we do find out, hey, it's really just not viable for our business to either shut down a third of our business or pay to reconfigure the track so it can be used, that's a different discussion. We don't want to just leave you guys completely high and dry, so we'd have to do something, I don't know, month to month or something.
One question is going to be, what are the clauses of the lease when it comes to someone feeling like they need to exit the lease, right? I mean, because that's what it comes down to ultimately. You're going to have to make a business decision as to whether or not this is still, you know, profitable enough for you to maintain what you currently have. You don't, I mean, other than what's written in the lease and the legal could probably
I mean, the firm is not profitable. It profited for the first time last year in seven years since I've been at the division. And anybody at the firm can tell you this number because we're visible and transparent with all of our financials because we do not do colder raises. It's based on our financials. We made $24,000 last year and we're happy to share those financials or maybe we did, I don't know. Robert was involved and, and he, he's not with, you know, us anymore. So I don't know where those discussions left off, but so really it's about making a huge investment in a future that we've already made an investment and now we find out that we're on the hook for this, right? So we've already made a huge investment thinking we had a 50-year lease. Now we find out that the lease is being reconfigured after 25 years. I know, by the way, you might be on the hook for X amount. I don't know if it's a half a million, a million and a half. I don't know. So that's really why for me, back a year ago, when these non-compliance issues came up, I really wanted to understand a year ago, what are the remedies for these things? Because we can't make commitment on the future when we don't know what the future looks like.
And the reason we couldn't answer you a year ago was because the FAA hadn't answered our questions about what the issues that we're having to address.
No, there's no finger pointing here. It's kind of, we're all just talking about where we're at. But obviously if where we're at, the airport had to pay for this, these would be things, obviously, that you guys would be, you know, discussing. Unfortunately, it falls on my side, so that's kind of where my head's at.
I think you have to. I mean, from my perspective as an individual, I know that you have grown your employee force and I know those employees have bought homes and, and they've moved to this community and they're established here now. And you have clientele that know you're here and there's more and more people finding out. I think you'll have to evaluate your business model once you find out what the FAA will accept. We've got to balance that with maintaining our assurances. But here's the other thing you got to consider. If you do leave, you're going to have to have acquisition of land. You're going to have zoning meetings. You're talking about if you had to spend, let's just say, and I'm throwing a number out there, let's say to reconfigure your track, it's going to cost you $30,000. It's a lot of money or if it's going to be 50 or 100, I don't know what it'll be. But what's going to be the cost of paving an entire new track? That's going to be in the millions, I'll bet. Wait, wait, please. You and I get back and we're both headstrong. But I'm saying, I think that's something y'all have to evaluate. But I think you can see by us having this meeting, we're trying to work through this. And just like Bill's telling us things and Bobby's saying, well, how could this go on this long? I'm, I'm kind of stunned too. How could this have just, how, how are we just now finding out about this? But your business has grown and you're continuing to grow that business. I know you have military contracts. You didn't always have Putnam County coming there. You didn't have military contracts. Your business is growing. So that's going to be up to y'all to look at your business model and see if it's feasible if Craig can get the FAA to accept or we can get them to accept. So we've got to balance this whole thing in a very delicate fashion.
By the same token, as, as David just said, our primary responsibility is satisfying the assurances for FAA.
We can't lose those.
No.
We can't pay $10 million for a new runway.
All of your funding, right? To have an compliance and we understand that. And I thought this meeting was very productive. I could see that we're all working together.
Right.
We're all sharing our pain points, but I, I just wanted to have an opportunity to let you know what our pain points are. And yes, the business has grown, but that means that instead of losing six or $800,000 a year, which was being financed as we worked to grow, we made $25,000. So if we were.
That's good.
If we were, which is great, right? But if we were a business that was generating millions of dollars in revenue, everything's relative, looking at a $500,000 or whatever is not a big deal. But it's a horse of a different color for this portfolio because of that.
Lorena?
Yeah.
Lorena, hey, this is, this is Chris Corcoran talking and I, I've tried to listen. I've had a couple of different meetings with David and Craig and they've been very helpful in trying to find a, a solution that I think was win-win for everybody. You know, the viability of the business model for the firm, I, I completely understand that's not your priority, nor need, nor do you need to worry about that. That's something that we'll make a decision on. But the one thing that I've heard this evening is the actual survey, right? You're not just talking about this one particular area. And I, and I could have heard this incorrectly, but it sounded like there needed to be a survey done to maybe identify other non-compliance issues. And that's my concern all along that I've expressed to David and Craig is, hey, we can talk about fair market value, but we didn't know what type of remediation needed to take place to make sure that the track was compliant. I'm not pointing any fingers. It is what it is where we are 24, 25 years later, whatever it is. But what I need some help with, when I go to my board to talk about, hey, this is where things fit, I really need to understand is, hey, what is the impacted area? Because we have never, and Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, but we only talked about this triangle area. We hadn't identified such a large area. So that, that is new news to me as of, you know, a couple of hours ago. So I, I am trying to get some clarity. Is the board going to move forward and say, listen, this is the area that you should be playing in so we can at least start to do some estimates on costs and restructuring and then make a viability determination? And again, this isn't about pointing fingers. I just, I'm confused at this point because we're all anxious to get this behind us. We initially thought we had a 50-year lease. We've tried to work through something. We're being told now, hey, no, that's not necessarily the way it is, Chris. But I'm really not sure right now is if there's a moving target for us, that, that makes it very difficult for it to run our business. So I just really need to kind of know, hey, when I go to my board on Thursday and say, hey, what was the outcome of the meeting? Can maybe somebody recap to me, hey, what is the first step to determine, Chris? Yeah, is the lease, we've extended into the RPZ zone? No, the encroachment's right there. This is the impacted area and this is what needs to be corrected. I know you still need to propose it to the FAA, but I'm, I'm really not sure of what the potential impact area that we're talking about right now.
So Chris, when, when we talked this summer, I think we had some verbal feedback and I want to emphasize it was verbal and not official feedback that maybe the RPZ was more flexible than the, the triangle, the, the ROFA. But I, I think that that was coming from our local airport office and once this got kicked up the regional, I don't think we had their comments until today.
That's right. Yep.
And, and I'm.
And Greg, listen, you, you've been very transparent. So this is not me, I'm, I'm just really trying to understand, because Lorena is right. There are contracts that we've, you know, signed commitments we've made, some with military units. And I'm, I'm really trying to say, okay, well, how do we move forward? Because the last thing we'd want to do is to jeopardize any of your funding because I know that's your priority. But I also want to make sure that we're honoring our obligations and I'm, I'm just trying to weigh those things out, which again, not your problem, but I'm trying to really make a determination this evening, if that's possible, is, hey, this is the potential impact. This is the worst case scenario. And so I can actually go to the people I need to go on Thursday and explain the situation.
Chris, you like this official?
It's not clear to me right now. Yep, go ahead, sorry.
I personally, this is just my opinion of the, the FAA feedback is that they're not going to allow any, any encroachment in any of the safety areas.
Okay.
And what I would say, Chris, this is Scott, I'm one of the board members, but all I'm talking about is on that RPZ. If, if, if the current lease is written, so it, it's indirect alignment with the RPZ on one side of it, as long as we're correcting and pulling all the skeletons out of the closet, why not fix it on the other side or the end or the side of the runway? I don't think these are going to be great big leaps. I, I think you might be talking about 10 feet, as Bill Prang, our engineer, said, on the south side of the RPZ and then 10 feet on the north side. And they're not even areas you currently, other than that track. I don't think there are any areas you go into anyway. I'm just saying, if we're going to discover any problems, let's get them out of the way right now while we're having a survey. Because what are you going to do when something comes up seven years from now and we've agreed to a lease and then we say, oh, well, we didn't survey the other side of the runway and now you want me to fix that? I think it's better to have it open, but I think they're minor adjustments. That's just my opinion.
And Scott, I completely agree with you about as far as the approach. Hey, let's identify all potential non-compliant areas because it is, it's tough to stop and go, right? The costs are hard, things change. I, I would love to just identify this and say, hey, we've already talked about, you know, putting in a modification to the existing lease. It would just be nice to know exactly what those boundaries are so everybody can be non-compliant so we don't have to face this again going forward.
Correct. One more thing, Chris. I know, I know you had asked this summer when we met with the FAA, you were concerned about, you know, if I fix this now, how can you assure me that I won't have a problem 10, 10 years from now? And I think that if the track is removed from the RPZ, at least from use anyways, that protects from any of the future issues with runway extensions or, or anything else that's currently on our airport layout plan.
So Craig, when we also had the call, and I forget the lady's name.
Katara.
You know, the FAA was one body, but also the Department of Defense was, we were waiting for them. She mentioned that they needed to sign off on something as well. And I'm, I'm trying to figure out, are any of these concerns coming from DOD?
That's.
Or all FAA and then we have to wait for DOD to come up next?
Yeah, I, I would have to ask, Chris, on that, I do recall she did say DOD, but again, I don't know if they, they only just got their, their sign off and the comments aren't from the DOD. I don't know. I'll have to ask.
Okay.
Great, just to clarify.
Just for, for next steps and are you, obviously modifications need to be made. I know proposal needs to go back to the FAA, but is the next step, I, it seemed like this was up for a point of contention or up for debate was, hey, is an appraisal or is a survey going to be ordered so we know exactly what the impacted areas are or what the lease area should actually be?
Bill, you had a comment?
Well, I was just going to comment on the DOD. If, if the airport is going to request a release, if the FAA uses the term release from your federal obligations, the FAA would.
Oh, right.
Check with DOD because the property was originally deeded from.
Yeah, yeah.
A forerunner of the DOD to the city, I believe. I, I do not believe you are or should request a release from your obligations.
Correct, right.
That's, that's actually literally almost the impossible thing to achieve and accomplish. And I don't think this is a situation that warrants that. And I don't think this is a situation that warrants that. That's usually done when you're selling a piece of surplus property is when you request a release from federal obligations. If you get the release, then you can sell the property.
And you have to pay back all the loans you got in the last twenty years or something like that.
Not in the event of getting a release.
Okay.
It's a very high threshold to get a release.
Okay.
So I think what, I think that comment was sort of just throwing things at the wall that day when D O D was mentioned. I do, I did write down a question, Craig, that you and I could follow up with them about the release. And if, meaning that if the, if a new or modified lease has entered into and there's no activity inside the R P Z or any other protected services, does that remove any discussion of a release being needed? I think the answer is yes. You wouldn't need a release in that case because you're not getting, you're not trying to get out of any applications at that point.
Right.
At that point, you just have a lease. They're leasing it and using it in accordance with the lease.
But I think they're, they would.
It's not going to come into play.
Right. And I think they would tell us no on a release anyways because of the encroachment on safety areas. They made a point to say, we have oversight over those areas, so they wouldn't release it anyways.
You could not meet the release threshold to get a release approved. I wouldn't even attempt it.
Would, would, would a good next step to be to talk to the FAA and have Mr. Corcoran present at all for any questions? He would have, he seems to have some questions about.
You could ask that.
Okay.
You, you know how hard it is to get a, even a phone call from the region?
Yeah.
So they, they prioritize these things and, you know, of all the non-compliance issues the FAA has, this is probably down the list.
Are you interested in that at all, Chris?
Oh, absolutely. Anything we can do to just make sure we're all on the same page and, you know, potentially find a win-win solution for all of us so we can move forward. Absolutely.
I think, I think to the question he was asking, though, was we just kind of threw some stuff out there. First, we were talking about, let's, let's survey the, you know, the, the firm's property and make sure it doesn't encroach on, on the R P Z. But then Scott mentioned about, oh, let's go do more. And that's where he, that threw out a whole different, you know.
Yeah, I'm good about throwing wrenches in the years.
So, so I think that's where it's like, whoa, now everything looks different.
Here's what it sounds like to me.
I don't think we've agreed to anything about which or where we're going.
It sounds like Bill, I think, to me, had the best plan of action. And that is first, let Craig go back to the FAA or the powers that be and see if removing, first off, can we leave the track there with no demolition and isolation?
Barrier.
A barrier, isolation. And then if we can do that, and, and that becomes more palatable to them. And then the second problem the FAA has, well, it looks like their lease encroaches in. So getting rid of just the, the obstacle in there is not going to be sufficient, or the use of the obstacle, I'd rather say. We need to correct the, the lines of the thing. That's when we go and have the survey done, it sounds like. So step one is to find out, will the FAA accept you moving the track, in effect? If you hook a Jeep to, get a bunch of Jeeps and pull the track this way. And then if that works, then the FAA says, well, what are you going to do about the survey and their lease? Well, we'll have it resurveyed. We'll renegotiate the lease. And that actually will take a few acres away, probably here and there it could, which may lower. And then the other thing is the appraisal. How can we get back in alignment with the appraisal? If we don't have any of those, it's a non issue. I mean, it's a, you know, we're stuck.
We're in trouble.
So that's what it sounds like to me. And Chris, I hope that didn't confuse you worse. My only suggestion is if and when we do the survey, that we go ahead and check other places for no, non-compliance. And they're pretty simple from what I see right here. It's, it's the north side of the runway. It's the entire edges of the R P Z. And at the R P Z, you might be talking about, as Bill said, moving them out ten feet. There are areas that you're not going to be in any, any way other than the track itself. And then renegotiating the lease lines based on a new survey and then the appraisal, getting that appraisal hurdle. Getting past it. That's the way I see it.
Now, I see another concern that they didn't come right out and say it in their response, but of a non-aeronautical activity displacing an aeronautical activity. Because they do make the statement here of this activity, motorsports, not suitable as the highest and best property.
That was just for valuation, though, was what?
No, not just valuation. Well, that was in that comment about a valuation, yes. But it is a concern that they, they say that because this is a non-aeronautical activity that could be displaced in an aeronautical activity.
We still.
I don't think that's what he's saying, though, because they.
Well, not, not in that point. That's why I'd say they didn't come right out and say it.
I think it's just evaluation.
In the future, I can see that being a problem, but.
Could be.
We have the entire length of runway eleven-two-nine for development for aviation activities.
Right.
The other thing that we've been told in the past, like our T-hangers. If you cannot find a tenant that will put an airplane in there and you've got empty hangers, you can. There are exceptions allowable to allow a business to come in there or allow somebody to pay storage so you're getting some revenue out of it.
Right.
I would imagine this track would be the same thing. However, in the future, probably after I'm long gone, thirty years, forty years from now, there may be a possibility that that track may be needed for aviation use, and you.
It may not be that, that long.
Your investments in that is not to go too crazy with it because I believe there are stipulations that the FAA or airport can reclaim land that is needed for aviation purposes because that's the primary function of the airport.
Mm-hmm.
But right now, I think there's other areas that we can develop.
All right. Let's, let's go back. So I agree with Mr. Frye. Let's have Craig go back to the FAA, have a conversation with respect to putting barriers in place, leaving the existing track there. Would they be agreeable to that?
No demolition.
Uh, no demolition on that.
Mm-hmm.
And then resolve the issue with the appraisal. And then once that's done, then we go back and address the, the lease amount for the fair market value once that gets straightened out.
Mm-hmm. And a survey.
And a survey if they are.
If all these other things.
Yes, they're going to be.
Mm-hmm.
I think part of that still needs to be a clarification on this highest and best use because depending on whether you read it as to a valuation or as a category of use of that land, you wonder whether they're going to say, no, at no value is it the highest and best use. It has to be this light industrial commercial airport. You know, I, I guess I'm, maybe I'm just the only one confused on that, but I don't understand. Are they saying that that operation does not fit the category of best in use or highest?
Highest and best use.
Use. You know what I mean?
It's, I strictly think it's, it's having to do with valuation. They didn't say.
For now, it is valuation.
They didn't say anywhere else in the thing when they addressed it that there was any problem with what they were using the property for. It was just in the valuation.
And it's revenue that's been generating that is being put.
Well, they, they did say that it should have been classified as light industrial commercial airport in the valuation.
Just change the valuation, but not that, not that you had to change what the company was doing out there. Yeah. So I think that's all that that involved in that.
So we'll give, we'll give Mr. Albright to, you know, answer that or resolve that.
Of course.
So, all right, that. Bill, Jim, does that sound?
From a non-legal perspective, by the way, you should, you should have noticed the legal guy's much better at keeping his mouth shut. Blame for that.
You know?
Yeah. Well, highest and best use, every, this is, this is what I have seen in other, I'll share, back up. In almost all cases, other airports, public airports that are federally obligated, when they have a non-aeronautical lease, it includes a clause that states in a reasonable period of time, the sponsor, the airport board or municipality can get out of that lease if an aeronautical use presents itself with viability.
And I believe that clause is in the lease.
It's already in your lease.
Yes.
So there's, the, the highest and best use really touches two things. It's what's appropriate in the context of an appraisal. The other thing you were talking around was, what if Boeing wants to come in and start manufacturing aircraft over there? You would say to that tenant, in accordance with the lease, we have an aeronautical use. It's higher and better. We're required to terminate our lease.
But that makes sense. Right.
And enter into a lease with an aeronautical business.
Okay.
So that, that possibility already exists that your lease covers it. I'm not familiar with the terms, but existing lease already has that.
Yeah.
I think for present purposes, it's correct. I read the FAA's response as saying, there's a problem with the appraisal because the appraiser looked for the wrong type of comparable property. He should be looking for light industrial property to use as his comps, and he used ag land and residential land.
Okay.
And if you make that correction and he re, and he redoes his comparable analysis and makes the adjustments to his overall opinion of value, which there will be an adjustment to the overall opinion of value, then the appraisal would be acceptable.
Okay. I got you. You got another question?
You're already protected against the other, your lease already protects you against the other possibility, which is at some point in the future, an aeronautical tenant presents that has viability.
Can I?
You're covered.
Ask you a question. So, and let's just throw it out there. Let's say Boeing or Amazon wants to come in here. In your experience, and you may not have any experience with that, they've invested in the infrastructure. Boeing wants that over there. Do you find that companies come in and do that? Will they work something out with the present tenant? I mean, they may not be required to, but would they say, we'll pay this much or they're just out?
About Boeing.
They're given two years to clear out or whatever it is, and they're gone.
Typically not two years, but yes, that's their out.
Okay. So that's something else for you to think about with your business model. I mean, it doesn't look like that'd be on the horizon for a long time.
That's the hype.
That's just the hype.
You know what I'm saying? But that's something to consider.
It's something to consider.
They can remove and salvage their built infrastructure, anything above ground, for instance.
Right.
But, but that's typically the only thing I see done. A lot of times when that happens, non-aeronautical tenants typically, because the cost to remove it exceeds its value, just walk away from it.
Right.
And then you own it.
General, if you had another question?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
With respect to the lease itself, so I'm confused. It seemed to me, and it sounded like there was some confusion I heard from Chris, too, is thinking that they had a fifty-year lease when they have a twenty-five-year lease. And it doesn't seem like that should be something to do with confusing to anybody. So hello?
May I?
Yeah, please.
It's not confusing to me. It's a twenty-five-year lease with two renewal options.
With two renewal options?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unilateral option to the tenant.
So what is the status of the lease today?
We had a twenty-five-year initial term, and the twenty-five years ran before that time the tenant timely gave notice of exercise of its first renewal term right.
So.
And now the question is.
So are they on?
The lease in breach because of non-compliance with F A A.
So are they operating on a renewal of the original lease?
They're on a month.
Right now.
There's one lease document.
Yes.
And it expresses an initial twenty-five-year term.
Right.
Upon the exercise of the first renewal option, we now moved into the first renewal period. It's the same lease, same terms, just extended for another period of.
So we exercised with them the renewal.
No, it was, we didn't exercise anything. It was an option exercisable by the tenant in its own discretion. And they exercised their discretion to give notice that they were taking the first renewal term. I think the first renewal term is fifteen, and then.
It's fifteen years.
The second one is another ten, so you can tackle on the renewal term, then you ultimately get a fifty-year lease.
So right now, we're operating in the renewal term of the lease.
The first renewal term.
And the amount, though, that they're paying, is that still in question?
That's for that appraisal.
It's in question, not because of anything within the four corners of the lease. The amount is in question because of a compliance issue concerning the fair market value rent, which is imported into the lease by the language of the lease.
So what is, what are they being charged right now?
Uh, Craig, what's the current amount?
I mean, because we submitted a recommendation to the FAA, which it sounds like they're kind of willing to.
What is it, around twenty-six, twenty-six thousand a year?
I don't know how.
Yes.
So roughly twenty-six thousand a year, and I think the appraiser said it should be, what, eighty-seven to ninety? I, I don't know what it is. And that's where he was trying to phase that.
Eighty-seven, eighty-eight to.
Ninety.
Hundred thousand dollars, somewhere in that range.
So.
But the problem we've run into.
But we have right here, year one, we recommended thirty-eight thousand, so.
It's a.
It's a phase up, a phase step up.
I understand, but I would think as the rentee, they would like to know what is the no shit that you're still paying.
Well, it will be, but the problem is the appraisal.
If I may, and I think, I think Mr. Coon deserves a lot of credit for going the extra mile to try to get FAA's approval to a plan that would be as much accommodative as a tenant as we possibly could. And to the extent of proposing a phase-in increase and not just requiring it from year one, we were successful there because, as I read it, the FAA has said, if you get your appraisal using the correct methodology, we are, we are amenable to a five-year phase-in.
Right. And, and I agree with all that. I'm just, I just don't know where it's actually written. What the tenant is supposed to be paying, like, because it seems.
It's like a lease.
It's in their lease.
It's the lease.
And what does the lease say?
That's what he.
You've got a copy of it, or do you have a copy?
What, what happened, General, the, that original lease amount, but over the years, within that lease.
The one point five percent.
One point five percent increase. So the current value, if you look on page two of Mr. Doge's, he put some numbers there that show what the fair market value should be, the eighty-eight year two. There was a range up to a hundred thousand, thirty-five a year. The firm is currently submitting twenty-one thousand per year. So I actually think it's.
No.
I think it's a little.
Just for their primary lease, it's twenty-six thousand. That doesn't include the other two.
Right.
The leases.
And so it would only bump up to that number in our recommended schedule once the FAA agreed to our five.
Bump up. Raise to whatever.
No, it won't be that number.
It'll be a new schedule.
It'll be a new schedule, new numbers. But unless the guy can say there's mitigating circumstances in his appraisal and that his number should stand. That's what, that's what we were talking about way earlier in the conversation. And then those may be the actual numbers.
And, and maybe it's helpful to point out that in this schedule, which was Mr. Coon's schedule, this, part of this voluntary, proposed voluntary action plan. Year five gets us to supposed full fair market value rent. What Mr. Coon used was the low end of the spectrum of values that our appraiser gave.
Yes, correct. Which, again, was even more beneficial to the firm overall and just trying to help them, you know, financially be able to.
Afford that or, yeah.
Yeah, just want to make sure we're open and transparent with them as to what, what they need to be paying. And they're, and they're not going to feel like, you know, we're slipping a fast one by and hitting, oh, year one, actually, you owe us thirty-eight thousand. This counts as year one. You know what I mean?
That's why when all this originally started, it was a shock because it would be like, as if all of a sudden your homeowner's insurance came in tomorrow, and now it's all seventy-five thousand dollars more than what it would be.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. It makes sense.
Thinking they're operating under this particular lease, that's right, you're containing this. And then we started the negotiations back in November and voted on change or having the appraisal done.
Right. The, the board that was in existence back then, too, I think, made a heck of a sweetheart deal with the original European rally. But it may have been their, their economic situation back then might have been as though, well, the income we're going to be getting, this is, it's great in nineteen ninety-nine dollars. But as you've gone up, it's costing us more to operate, you know.
Well, and in fact, there was an appraisal done in nineteen ninety-nine. It supported the value that's reflected in the nineteen ninety-nine lease. So if that appraised value had stayed the same over this entire period of time, then we wouldn't be having this issue.
But a one and a half percent increase per year was pretty conservative, in my opinion. That's just my opinion, but I wish I could get into a deal like that.
Yeah.
Lorena?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering if when you talk to the FAA, if you say, hey, in order for the firm to be compliant, this is a huge cost for them. Are you factoring that into this rent because they'll have to remediate that? Is that something we can ask them about or have you, Craig? I don't know. I haven't.
I don't recall if I did or not. I can ask, but.
Well, Craig, we did not, I think she's talking about rent credits.
Yeah, I, I know.
We, we did not ask about that because we thought it would be dead on arrival.
Oh, okay. I don't re, I, yeah.
Again, the FAA is telling you they don't need a racetrack in an airport. I mean, you just read that. It's pretty blunt.
I don't think that would be acceptable.
That is what they're saying.
It's pretty blunt, their language. And we try to get what we can to preserve your operation, and that's going to be what is had at the end of the day. And then y'all have to make a decision, is this acceptable?
All right. So we know what we're going to do. Craig, you're going to get back with the FAA. You and Bill will probably have some conversation, address those issues we've mentioned, and come back to us with. mentioned, and come back to us with in the December meeting.
I don't, I don't know if we'll be able to get.
If if we can get it.
FAA.
I mean.
But I can certainly try.
Submit the this proposal. Has it been months? I mean, it's been.
September 3rd.
So October. Well, so they got a shooting answer within two months. So it could be January before we know anything again if they're.
Bill said this was going to move slow when it got pushed to regional.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's.
Two months is good.
Too much is good.
Obviously. For feedback on a corrective action plan of a non-compliant issue to the region, two months.
We actually pushed for this.
Correct.
Ryan, our local guy, pushed her to do this.
Yes.
Yes.
I think they, I think it's a courtesy because you, they knew you had a special call meeting.
Right.
They probably moved it in front of something else. I think two months is a is a really good expectation based on other experiences that I have. We might not always get a two-month turnaround.
Right.
The close, I will say this, though, the closer we get to proposing something that we that they think they're going to like, your your duration will will shorten, or they'll ask for more information. In fact, that would be a good sign if they said, hey, can you give us more information regarding your corrective action plan, item number two, more detail on what you're proposing? That means they're considering it. And so, again, I said earlier, I think it's, it's, Craig, it is probably time to sort of ramp up the specificity.
Mm-hmm.
A little bit, at least on the technical matters. Not, I don't know how the appraiser's going to want to approach that, but.
Yeah. I was just reading through his appraisal, and yeah, anyways, go ahead.
All right. So in the meantime, as Craig gets information, Craig, why don't you just email all of us, share that, keep the firm in the loop, obviously, that we've been doing, and we'll just keep working through the process.
So David, so the specifically then, what do you think the next step is? Is that you're going to do a new CAP, right?
I have.
Is that the idea, is that you're?
Eventually, yes. But I think I need to get more information from the FAA.
So is so is that more information going to be that you're going to recommend the guardrail and no demolition and ask them if that is something or is?
That's a good idea.
So, yeah, I think what we're wanting Craig to get from the FAA, if they will, they won't give us anything definitive until we get something like this.
Well, it needs, probably needs a response to this.
So, once he, the conversations I've been involved with Craig and Chris and and Bill occasionally with the FAA, it's it's always, they listen, they'll have conversation with you. And then they're waiting for a corrective action plan, basically. But they have been good to work with us and say, well, you know, that's probably an idea, how about looking at this, looking at it from this angle? So I think with Craig going back, asking these questions about the barrier, can the track stay there? And then what can we do specifically with the appraisal? And then we'll just, whatever feedback he gets, that he can share that with us. And then that will help us formulate then our next CAP that we submit to them.
Well, do you think, since it appears that the appraisal is is null and void, I mean, they they're not accepting that, except if you go back to him and if he says that that's really the best thing I can do and gives the reasons, I mean, if he goes ahead and he gets all that from Mr. Albright, then then there's two birds with one stone, because you're not going to get too many conversations with the FAA, probably, is is to have maybe those two items specifically, you know? If if you're going to just kind of figure out, okay, is this the right step? Are we heading in the right direction? Will you accept, you know, this guardrail thing? You know, is that a potential? And, you know, will you accept a revaluation of the appraisal or whatever?
Mm-hmm.
Those would give us a really good movement forward if we had answers to those two things.
And it will help us formulate.
Right.
The next CAP that we present to them.
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Any other comments?
Mr. Frye? So I have a, I have a strategy question. This is directed at the board members. Something that's, I think, implied by the FAA responses is you're not, in fact, it's stated, it's not implied, you're not enforcing your lease properly.
Mm-hmm.
And I just would ask the board, I don't, I don't think you need to take action tonight, but at a future board meeting, perhaps the board, as a gesture, is it maybe a way, as a gesture to the FAA to say, we take this seriously, you should enforce, you should find a way, a workable solution to enforce the lease boundaries.
And and to inform the FAA that we are.
To inform the FAA, the board voted on such and such a date, on the following.
We don't know what the boundaries are yet, though.
Yeah.
I was going to say.
We still don't know where the boundary.
No, you do. You do. You know about the track.
Boundaries, you know there's track outside the boundary.
Yeah.
Correct.
We don't know if it's 62 feet or 61 feet.
Right, right.
But you know that there is racetrack that was built outside the lease boundary without proper FAA review and approval.
Mm-hmm.
And.
The barriers we fixed that, though, right?
He's talking about immediate action.
I'm talking about the board should think about it. It's not a recommendation. I'm not on the board. I don't have to live with the consequences of this suggestion. But I would ask the board to think about it, so that so that when Craig gets asked, what's the board going to do about the track is currently being used.
Enforcing the terms of the lease.
Outside the terms of the lease.
That's a very good suggestion, because they made that comment more than once, and they're.
What are the barriers for?
Well, yes. And and maybe the board would say, until and unless you install barriers, do not use the track anymore. Do not use that part of the track that encroaches across the RPZ. It's just a suggestion, because I feel, listen, again, we're moving closer to the end of the funnel. They're going to, they're going to want to follow up on that item, and we didn't, tonight, we didn't really talk about anything to address the FAA's concerns that it appears the airport's not enforcing the terms of the lease agreements by limiting the tenant's development beyond the leasehold boundaries. So I don't think you have to do something tonight, because this is not, this is not an enforcement action from the FAA. It's, in fact, I think it's still in the category of tentative notice of non-compliance, I think.
Potential non.
Potential. So they have, again, they have other escalations. You'll know when they're turning up the heat. We're not there yet. But part of not, having them not turn up the heat is being responsive to their comments.
Essentially, they've said it is non-compliance, but they're giving us the opportunity to correct this.
Yeah. And I think what, I think, Craig, when we get on the phone or with whoever, or when we write the next thing, I think you need to state that at the special call meeting, it was discussed, the board will be considering in the near-term future, a month or three, a way to address that comment. We need to at least let them know, we saw that, we understand the importance of that, and that they're they're considering a remedy. Whether the board ever decides to adopt a remedy or not, that's, I don't care one way or the other, just saying that's something we haven't talked about tonight, and I saw it in here twice.
Right.
So.
That's interesting.
Yeah, I think they want to know. Remember, Craig, I said, talk to them often, and so that we can get more information back from them. Let's just keep talking to them. Don't ever stop talking, or they'll think you're trying to get away with something, and that's when they escalate.
Wouldn't you think it's it's fair to say, though, in Craig's response initially, because you were trying to figure out a way to make it work, that I don't think even in his initial response, he said anything that seemed to indicate that we were going to, like, stop it?
No.
I think just the meeting tonight and the talk about solutions and everything should give them a good indication that we are looking for a permanent solution. You know, I think I think that's a big step from just your response that you first gave them, is now, okay, look, we're looking for concrete solutions. Will this work? Would you accept this?
Well, I think it's good advice to consider something that would would tell the FAA, we are enforcing the terms of the lease.
I agree with you, you say that specifically.
Yeah.
And and possibly it's good enough to state that you are considering, that that might be, that might get us past a threshold to buy us more time to, you know, get, let Craig get some other feedback on the next version of the corrective action plan.
We've got one minute left on my.
Fine. Okay. So I think the consensus of the board is that we are wanting to do that. So Craig, you can share that with the FAA when you have that conversation, that, you know, we're moving forward to a resolution to address that. All right. Mr. Taylor, you have any comments?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other comments from the board?
All right. We'll consider self-dismissed adjourned at 8:11. Thank you, everyone, for coming and participating.